Start the city council meeting February the thirteenth, twenty twenty four. We'll do the pledge of allegiance. Sam, you hold your head there, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands. All nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A council member's present is Michelle Hunter.
Here.
Kim Helgeson.
Here.
Mary Bailey, absent. Molly Ryan, absent. Mayor Hank is here. City Administrator Mark Holson, here. City Attorney Joe.
Sathy.
Sathy. And City Engineer Eric Plainer. Burnt Chief Police Jeff Shelton, along with various other department heads. So we can go with that. We'll have citizens' comments. Are there any that anybody wishes to bring up? If not, we will move on to adopt the agenda. And I understand that there is a change or an add-on to it. Would you like to go for that, Mark?
Um, to add, old business B, um, request to a law department in rear half of first floor. Billings in the C one district, Stephanie Brazino, that was tabled from last month. Um, that would be, she's requesting that the zoning ordinance be amended. Um, so if the council, anyway, that's what the agenda would be to talk about if the council wants to have a draft agenda or draft ordinance put together for that or not.
Okay. Okay, then. Is there a motion then to adopt the agenda with the new item in old business?
I can make that motion.
Okay, we do need a second on it.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made, second to adopt the agenda as is with the add-on of the apartments on the first floor of business districts. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye, please.
Aye.
Ayes, okay, let's pass. Okay, here we go. Presentations, public hearings, recognition, block formations. Item A is school bus driver. Appreciation day block formation. I do have something here. Is this what you wish?
Yes.
Oh, okay, there we go.
Um, yeah, I guess you could move it to later in the agenda.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
On the school bus?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there gonna be somebody here? Is that?
Yeah.
What I'm gathering?
Yeah.
Yeah, there always has been. That's why I was wondering. I grant the question now. Okay, that's good. We'll do it later. Oh. Consent agenda. Oh, was that Holly?
Yes. Consent agenda.
Okay. Who did that?
You just have to do consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. No wonder I skipped by here. I see. I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting me. Uh, okay, we need, we can do this one here, the consented agenda, approval of the minutes and appointments. And financial, we can do that in one motion if it will be.
I will make that motion to approve the consent agenda, approval of minutes and the financials.
Okay, I'll pass. I'll second that one. Those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass, okay? Thank you, Holly. Well, then we can move right along into engineering. Derek, how about you?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first on the list is a quote for the twenty twenty four asphalt rejuvenator project, or as we more commonly refer to it, the seal coating project. Um, this, uh, nearly the same improvements were done, uh, last year from the same contractor. Uh, we're just talking about doing this for a new list of streets. These streets, um, were paved, uh, last year as part of the twenty twenty three street project. Um, you'll see in my letter here, we received one quote. The material that we're specifying is actually proprietary product, so the fact that they had one quote is expected. Um, they provide a good pricing. We're recommending approval, um, of that quote.
That's the same one as last year. Amen. You didn't have any problems with them at all?
They're quick, quiet, and out of here in a day.
Okay, and we need a motion on that then to approve that. So I, I will make the motion on that. To, uh, prove, uh, that the quote for sixteen, sixteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made. Second on, uh, asphalt rejuvenation project. All of the, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes pass.
All right, um, so next one is just a, uh, information only, uh, update on our recent discussion with Parks Board, um, regarding, uh, some potential improvements over at Debo Park. Um, kind of brief summary here, as many of you know, there's, um, there's a study that was done by, uh, MSU students, um, laying out multiple improvements, improvement options, um, that the city may consider, uh, in future years. That plan did include a whole five-year plan for, uh, implement, um, those types of improvements and raise funds, that type of thing. Um, I guess what we had talked about during the last meeting was more of a suggestion on, let's, uh, spend this next year trying to decide amongst the park committee at least, um, which improvements seem to be important to them in the city and then focusing efforts on whatever that improvement may be. Um, once we have that very specific goal in mind, it'll make things like fundraising or grant applications a lot easier because we'll have a good story to tell. Um, so, you know, between that and maybe some additional, uh, investigation and research between Wayne and I, uh, to price out some of these options a little more closely over the summer, that was kind of the gist of the conversation. Anything to add, Kim? That was all.
That's it? Got a shortie tonight?
Yep.
You plan that?
Yeah, maybe.
Well, then the next one is gonna be a shorty yet, maybe. Legal? So Joe, you get your chance at it.
That's right. Well, uh, Mr. Mayor, I do not have anything additional, uh, to add, so I will keep it short.
Okay, for right now.
For right now, yeah. There are some things I'll add later.
Okay, very good. Well, the next one we'll go then with is old business. Item A is discuss status of payroll processing service, and I know that, uh, there will be some discussion on that. So Mark and, uh, Whitney and.
So I wanted to have the council updated on kind of the way things have been going with payroll processing. Firm that we've been using, um, we've considered to have issues. And fortunately, you know, it's been kind of up and down, so I was gonna have Whitney just give kind of an update on where that's at and some ideas she has on moving forward.
Whitney, you wanna come close so we can all hear you?
No.
Thank you.
Sit over here, I can talk to those.
There you go.
Um, we're currently, before, when I first started, we were using Banyan, and it was a very manual system. Then we opted to go with Paycom, as the individual prior to me had a lot of experience with Paycom. The transition with Paycom has been very difficult. We've been able to process payroll accurately and efficiently and making sure that our employee is paid. However, on the backside, it takes longer for me to get the upload ready to go so I can put it in our system and reconcile everything. Probably just as long to do that, but I tried to work with Paycom. It, personally, we started with Jacob Mackers. He got terminated. Then Claudia, who was the next, she walked out the door. She put her teeth in. Pretty good. We're done. The individual that we're still working with, Amber, she, it's not as easy to work with that individual, so we're looking at other options. I have talked to the management there and unfortunately, until the implementation of our city is done in Paycom. All crazy. Um, we have to get that done before we can get to sign with another team for. We started this back in, we started.
Well, I don't know, last summer.
June, June, July, and we're still in implementation, still having issues. Our tools aren't even working right for vacation, and then I have my own that I'm creating and working on to make sure that we have everything accurate for the guy. Or accurate, otherwise it's not accurate in Paycom right now. So that's my just, I am looking at ADP. I do know that Wayne and Justin both used ADP in the past. They liked it, you know, till it went. Some of our part-time police officers currently utilizing through Goodview County. I did look and see what they have, the CDC, a couple screenshots of it, so, you know, the compensation of ADP, they're using it on the city. Have a similar. With that, there's a couple nuances that we have at the city, such as some departments want clocking in, some departments want to, yeah, some departments want to have any per hour, and I want to make sure that they don't change anything that went that way. So there's different pieces of ADP that work. But cost-wise, going to ADP will actually be less for payroll than the front end. Within a year or so, we will save what we paid for the implementation with Paycom. I am, while we're looking at ADP in mind, before the ADP, there's always that whole, like, is there other items that we could do to our software? There are other things out there, so still looking. ADP seems to be the leader of everything right now. Going forward and. Yep.
Sounds good. Know if there's any questions?
How will this transition go?
It would, for our guys on the field, guys can download there. I want to see the people comfortable, comfortable, payroll with that and make sure that it equals out, similar to how we did with Banyan. I want to make sure that they get paid accurately so I don't have to fix them back and I keep doing more payroll. I don't know if they thought about going to Paycom when it first got implemented. I think everybody got paid accurately.
Awesome, yeah.
Come on.
The first one of clocking and stuff, is that a game that we can play in two different ways or is it?
Great team, man. Each department has, we guys in the K and P side, they clock in. The police officers, because they're varying schedules, they track on their own, and at the end of the day, they take work eight hours, twelve hours, one clock, it's all. It's better than clocking.
My word.
Nope. And I, because they are the, these are the balls, I want them to say how, that they want and what they're.
Any more to put?
Thank you very much.
So the discussion mainly is to change.
It's more of an informational, what's going on with it.
Yeah, we've come back. When we're gonna change, we'll come back. You know, the.
Okay, so is there is a motion maybe needed? I was just wondering, no?
Yeah, I wasn't sure, but I think right now we're still kind of just not quite. I mean, we don't have all the information together.
Okay.
More of an update. Everybody ready for what's probably coming?
Well, keep us up to date on it as to what goes so that we know a little bit more by next council meeting after you probably will make a decision.
Yeah, we're gonna move on some. You'll probably be back.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, item B is, uh, that got tabled from last month is apartments on the first floor, business district. So. And that, you can go with that.
Um, Stephanie Brazino was here at the general meeting. Um, the, it was in December. It was reviewed by the planning commission. Um, this was, and it's a request to allow apartments on the first floor buildings in the downtown area in the C one district, in the rear half of the buildings. Um, when it was discussed last month, and I did pass out the ordinance again, and then the copy of her diagram of her building. Um, it was tabled basically, so it's being brought up again this month. Um, if it is something that the council wants to move ahead with, um, the city attorney would be instructed to basically draft, draft language. That would come back and would have to be approved, so there wouldn't be an actual approval of this tonight, but it would start the process of getting the ordinance amended. So that's what would need to be done in order to allow it from that's the only.
Yeah, and the planning commission did approve it already.
They recommended.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So, Joe, what you got to say?
Uh, if the council would like us to draft this amendment, we're happy to do it. Um, it shouldn't take too long, I don't think. Can we by next meeting, I assume?
Also, do you have any comments to make on it?
Was he really gonna add about this, or do you know why we tabled this?
From what I understood, um, area that makes free traffic and parking.
You wanna come forward so we can all kind of hear?
Um, so I, from what I understand, there was an issue with parking and with the building that I own, I have um, private parking, it's been coming hard on it. That would be an issue, and then from what I understand, that there was comments of Main Street traffic from living there, but there would be no access to the Main Street, only the alley, which is actually part of other Main Street.
Yeah, the, I think the gist of it was, they're worried about other properties, not yours, because yours is set up really nice. You have a lot of parking. I think it's more other buildings, looking at other buildings where there isn't much parking and just a lot of what-if kind of things, you know? Um, the one thing I would say is, this is proposed as a condition of use permit, so every person that comes in and asks for it would have to go through a public hearing. You know, it'd be reviewed by the council and the planning commission, except each one would be looked at individually, so it's not like it would just be a blanket approval. Um, and that's one thing I would, you know, definitely just want to point out.
I think some of the concerns maybe we, if this is allowed, and your tenant, tonight, is parking around some business sponsors, maybe more pool boards. But we'd be like, okay, now we can't have customers parking because all these cars are here, but there's invisible so much parking. You need to park.
And you have a lot on the entire block. And like, with that, that apartment of lazy.
Yeah, then you have, I would address a little parking back there.
It, um, I'll have a word.
You don't do anything, it would be very.
And the whole idea for this is to have a front, you get a little storefront for me, it's that you have like a little company, it's setting up a concentration for the design. Some different personalized things, like to pull stuff. I could celebrate lists and anything, and then during special events, we got the storefront holding enough adults for dollar stuff, you know, payroll, about business, um, profit last, the counter items, how to sell at the time it takes to make things work. Oh, that was my original idea for this new building. And we got it, we get the water, we can shoot it. But now, great, we got the things that were, I'm not going to the payphone for that front storefront. Any of their products, like, what they make, so.
When this was first brought up to the planning commission, I wasn't really in favor, I'd be very honest about it, but after I started looking around, doing some investigating on my own, uh, talking to people, and, um, actually, I don't see it to be a problem myself. I'm personally saying now that, but it's up to the council to decide what they want to do. It won't get, we have to go through the process, first of all, so it'd be another month at least, yeah, before.
Add it, and then it's approved, and so public listening knows, this is not an only blanket for everyone, it's going to be a case-by-case basis, so they would have to do like you did, amend, and have.
Yeah, it would be one.
I'm fine with it.
So, yeah, if you're, so we'll make a motion.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion and we re-look at this back.
Okay, so instruct the city attorney to draft, uh, draft language for the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, come up with the zoning and change language.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we have the motion. We need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion. Is there any more discussion? I'll ask that. I don't think there is. Okay, a motion has been made and second to draft an ordinance. Is that what we're gonna say?
Yep, to, to have the city attorney.
Through the city attorney.
Bring forward.
And then it'll probably be on the agenda for the March meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, we can, we can work to bring it back.
All of those in favor of the motion, will you say aye?
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, it's. Okay, I believe that's it for old business. We'll get on with the new. And that is with, uh, item A or one. A is, uh, appointment of election judges for twenty twenty four, and that's resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four, adoption of the, of the election judges for twenty twenty four. I think we have to do each one of these on a, yes, we will. I realize that, though. Okay.
Each person's name?
Just the resolution.
Hey, well, I'll make that motion anyway. Um, do we, do we go through our name off the ones or just that it's, it's, uh, on our?
No, I think.
Yeah, you can, uh, Mr. Mayor, you can just approve the resolution that includes the names.
Okay.
So you don't need to read out names. It's just the resolution approval.
Okay, I'll make that resolution then. Motion for resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four, adoption of election judges to include the names for twenty twenty four. Need a second on that.
I'll second that.
Okay. All of those in favor of the motion, will you say aye, please?
Aye.
And opposed? Ayes, absolutely. Okay, item B is a scheduled spring cleanup day for April thirteenth or the twenty seventh.
This would be a spring cleanup day, um, the same setup as what we had last year. Uh, we're proposing again that it's held in Debo Park. Um, flung disposal is indicated that they would, you know, they would do it again this year. They felt that last year was very successful, so what we would need is just, uh, I guess a motion to set the date, you know, for the event.
Motion to set the date for the April twenty seventh?
Twenty seventh? This is Saturday, April twenty sixth, here.
Yeah, up above, he's got the twenty seventh, but in the typo.
It's just the.
Twenty sixth, yeah. It should be April twenty seventh, Saturday.
Okay. Any more discussion on it? We did a motion then. Second, did you second it?
I can, I'll second it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, uh, a motion is bad made and second for the spring cleanup for April the twenty seventh, which is a Saturday. All of those in favor of the motion, please, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass. Is that gonna be basically the same type of scheduling, or, you know, that we had, uh, last year?
Yep.
Yeah.
So you can get it out already in the next, uh,
Yeah.
billing, came to your billing.
Yeah, however we did it.
Okay.
Yep, and I'll, I'll be down there to help plum. I can take the payments and do that this year.
Okay, you're gonna do that again?
Yeah.
Okay, and you do need some help.
I don't, well, I think the public works for you guys down there last year at home. No, you, I think plum did everything. Sandy just took the money pretty much, so, yeah, that's all. I'll just take that and
Good.
be down there for the money.
Well, I got one question on that. Do they take fluorescent tubes, you know, the four footers? Where do we get rid of them?
They take them all the way down to the county.
And where?
All the way down to the county.
Yeah, I've heard the county before, but nobody tells me, nobody knows where it's at, or?
It's at the recycle center. They used to take when they do their.
Do they do the hazardous? You know?
They used to do it, they just clean up there. They quit taking light bulbs.
Where? They have a fee on that?
They don't take at all. They, they, they clean up.
Yeah, but I mean in Red Wing. I just will have to do some.
I would think they might charge a fee here.
Yeah, I got thirty-eight of them to go. Okay. Item C is purchase of a lawnmower. Man, Eric, how about you speaking up?
So.
We got it already, but.
What we've been doing is, we've been cycling our mowers on a three-year cycle. So, uh, right now, our seventy-two inch, you can't do that, you know, it's three-year term. So on one aspect, since we also put the Auburn Hill in the berry grass, we always kept that bigger mower, so it's, it'll hold the slope a little better. So we're talking about going down to sixty inches instead of seventy-two. So it would save us a little money to cost the mower, and mid-trading that one off, it'll be easier. So with the idea of two quotes, that's all the quotes I've seen, and I would recommend one was the total.
There more discussion on it, between the two bits?
Those with the building, what you got?
Pretty good trade-in value.
Yeah, so with the program we started years ago, I mean, before we were driving lawnmowers to their garbage, you know, it's our fourteen, sixteen thousand dollars, so trading them at three-year cycles seems to be good for us, at good value on trade-in. It's a good mower itself for the retailer. Trading them at three year cycles seems to be good for us, and good value on trade in, it's a good mower itself, for the retailer, it's just.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make that motion if it's okay there for the purchase of the lawnmower, and that'll be from, uh, Taxpayer Power and Equipment.
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion? Not, motion has been made, second about the purchase of the lawnmower from Taxpayer Equipment, all of those in favor of the motion, say aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes pass, okay. Okay, the next one is review for the quotes for replacement of council room sound system, which it definitely needed.
So, we got two quotes. Um, we got a quote from Sim Sound of Winona and a quote from EPA Audio in Buffalo. Um, the SIM quote is, I think, you know, it's a lower quote, it's seventeen thousand, there's some other options in there. Um, but I think basically both quotes would use the existing mics. Both company reps that came out said the mics are still good, they're very much the same kind of mics, they still sell. So, um, the SIM, what would, would, uh, if it's one or two, three hundred sixty degree speakers in here, um, you know, new ones. The other one, I think they were gonna try to use these, at least, uh, you know, the apparatus that holds them and try to replace the speaker, but. Anyway, I, that's what my recommendations, I also forwarded these to Councilman Shaw Leonard to review, because you have, you know, you have a lot of audio experience.
Like, the difference in was good, I'd, I'd like that.
Lot of information they give us.
Yeah.
And I think it would improve it light years, I know it's expensive, but I think we have to do something.
Be able to hear better, and if the public hears better, I think is important.
Yeah.
Especially having it make for, for the podium for.
Yes.
For comments, because anybody watching the viewing of this now, you can't hear what they're saying, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we go with Sim Sound for the purchase of the audio video, purchase of the all.
Which one are you going with?
Sim.
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand one, Sim Sound. Second one.
I will second the motion for Sim Sound.
Okay, any more discussion on that? There isn't, then, uh, motion has been made, second, for replacement of the city council sound system, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass. Okay, item E, update on personal policy, agreements, policy.
Okay, so, this is, right now, just, uh. We're just bringing this up for, um, discussion right now, um, the policy will be reviewed further by the personnel committee, presented for information this time. That's all I have on it, but we want to get it out, so. And this policy came from the, the Minnesota City's Model HR Ordinance or HR Policies, so we basically took, kind of took it verbatim from that. And Scott had kind of, you know, talked to me about this too. So, anyway, it's gonna be reviewed by the Personnel Committee and then it'll come back, maybe at the March meeting, we'll see what we're at with it.
Would it be possible, throwing this out, can we look at it as a, as a work session, as a council?
Yeah, or that would be another option.
Yeah.
Actually, the work session will come, what my intention was, is go Personnel Policy and then either regular council or work session.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it'll be there, so we could all look at it a little bit more.
Okay.
Get some input on it. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Any other comments to make?
Nope.
All right, okay. Okay, item F is the review of the twenty twenty four pool rates.
All right, so we have, um, I wanted to bring this to the council. Randy and I, um, looked at the twenty three rates and I came up with some recommendations to look at some increases in fees. Um, the pool's always a, you know, it's not really a thing that makes money for the city, it's not intended to, but we feel that with. You know, the maintenance needs, with the continuing, we kind of have to, we, your update, uh, increase the pay to keep. You know, staff out there that we needed to look at, some increases in the fees. So, um, basically, I don't know if you want me to go through each one of those separately, you have those in your packet in that summary, and it was, it also was. Um, distributed to the park board, um, I got just a little comment, but there wasn't anybody that was against it, so. I think it puts us more in line with one of Mingo, and some of the other surroundings around this. Um, at least some of the older ones, I don't think we're trying to be comparable to like places that have newer aquatic centers or whatever, but just similar pools like we have.
Any indication, um, Wayne, like what the chlorine costs of that for this year, is that?
Chlorine's been jumping, I don't know, it's kind of slowed down, but chlorine's been jumping all last year. Everything else seems pretty stable from the other chemicals. I did buy the cheaper one for something, but. We're limited on, since we switched to liquid, we're gonna.
Does it have a good shelf life, like, the price is low, does it boost us to stock up a little bit, or doesn't it?
Yeah, it doesn't like the winter, so we try to run out before the winter, it's like right now, there's a little bit of, the acid we buy, that'll happen. That's been pretty stable as far as chlorines, we need to sit soon.
Well, thanks for looking into that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, he is, yeah. Bus driver.
Why was that?
Bus driver, Brad was saying.
Yeah, I know, okay.
Sure.
Want to do it now, or we got finished off?
Yeah, finish this item.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty four pool rates as noted.
We'll second that then, okay, any other discussion on it? Okay, motion has been made, second, on the twenty twenty four pool rates, as stated, all of those in favor, would say aye, please?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass.
So, one side note on that, then, we would be going to just one rate, there will be no more resident numbers and.
Yeah, it's in here already, so.
Yep.
Yeah, and they also got an increase in hourly wage, too.
Yeah, they will be.
Now, Randy had mentioned once to me about, uh, a phone, you know, a temporary one for, and, is that been?
We're working on, working on.
Okay, she had mentioned that already some time ago to me about, uh, it would help relieve some of her duties, you know, on a twenty four hour.
Yeah, she's got an assistant, kind of assistant manager that she is gonna be taking one of that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, we'll run on to, uh, G. Prove the transfer of park and rec for the five K running, remaining funds of four thousand five hundred ninety four dollars fifty nine cents. As of January thirty first, twenty twenty four, the park and rec people park fund. What I can.
Well, I think that's a good idea to move it, because, as we don't.
Be useful.
That'd be useful for us and makes it easier for the bookkeeping part two in one area, so, I'll make that motion.
Okay. We'll second that then, any more discussion on it? Not, motion has been made, second to approve the transfer of the park and rec five K remaining funds to, uh, to the Depot and Rec Park Fund. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass. Hey, got some more to go. Prove the transfer of park and rec carriage and cutter remaining of two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars and forty one cents funds as of January thirty first, twenty twenty four. And that would go again to the park and rec people park fund. Need a motion on that then.
I'll make that one.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made, second, to approve the transfer of the park and rec carriage and cutter remaining funds as of January thirty first to the park and rec depot park fund. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye, please?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ayes, ayes pass. Okay, item I, Fire Relief Association requests for approval of a gambling premise permit for Kenyon Fire Hall. You guys know when you're gonna have that?
What's the question?
Um, more on the gambling permit for the Kenyon Fire Hall.
So what we're looking at is, so now, since we have our full fledged gambling license, we have our yearly raffle. And before, we can draw that at the fire hall, like at our street dance, or at, then, but now, since we have the full fledged gambling license, we're only authorized to draw the winners at the muni. So like this year at our firing stance, we had to go to the muni to draw the winners, everybody's at the fire hall, waiting to hear what won, so, all this is, is giving us. The old kid, it's, it's a paperwork pledge with the state, it's just giving us the old kid to say, hey, we have a raffle, we can draw the winners at the fire hall, add it to that.
It's easier to get a permanent license first than to go up there and do something. And this is just renewed every year, hundred fifty dollars. So then, you have the dance again, have the raffle, you don't get to run back and forth, you can just draw out there and everything is legal and legit.
So again, last year, we had to, the guys went down to the muni, FaceTimed, had witnesses go down there, drew the winners, and went back to, we eliminated that. Um, but it also eliminated, we did. Other events, some people gone there, or. Down here. It's, it's been raffled off.
Thank you. I'll make the motion that we approve for the raffle drawing capabilities, having a good premise permit, premise permit to the fire hall to do a raffle, so you're not running back and forth. And it's a hundred and fifty dollars a year, so, at the cost of a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
I'll second that.
More discussion, if not, there has been a motion made for the Fire Relief Association request for approval of a gambling premise permit for the Kenyon Fire Hall. Those in favor of the motion, say aye, please?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes.
Just saying that, that a hundred and fifty, that's not in city funds either. No, I. Thank you, though, for finding that.
Okay, the next one on there is, uh, Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh six, approve of lawful gambling premises permit application. For the Kenyon Firemen's Relief Association, thought that was taken care of last time.
You know, it should be. I have furnace.
Yeah.
You know, I have them, yeah, I have the muni furnace next to my agenda. I've got Jay.
I think, yeah, it looks like there's just.
I, I think there's.
That's a typo, yeah.
Okay, well, wipe that one out then.
Don't worry about that.
Okay.
I was already approved, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll go with Jay then, is everybody on Jay?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna get some heat here, muni furnace replacement quotes. Mark, do you want to go through that?
So, we received two quotes for furnace A C and then for the mini split unit, um, from action heating plumbing and. Laken, I'm not sure if I pronounced it right.
Lukin.
Lukin, okay, so anyway, as it turned out, the quote from action, where they, you know, main heating and A C. Was lower, so we would recommend approving the quote from action heating for the, action heating and plumbing for the main A C and, um, heating unit. Um, that was approximately eleven thousand four hundred, it's in the summary there, that amount. And then the mini split, Lukin was the cheapest, or was lower, so we'd recommend going with their quote for the mini split.
Who's, who's there, Lukin?
Lukin, yes, Lukin for the main split and, um, action for the main.
Yeah.
Heating and A C. Lukin's quote for the main split was sixty nine ninety five, and action's quote for the heating A C was ten thousand two hundred forty five. Suppose we'd have to approve those separately.
Yeah, action again was, uh, well, let's see, uh.
Action's actually, their total with the denims, they're eleven thousand four eighty five, I'm sorry, I was reading bottom there. Um, theirs is eleven forty five, Lukin's mini split was sixty nine ninety five.
Okay, I'm with that.
The addendum part, that is something that might not be needed, is that what it read?
Yeah, and if it's not, then that'll reduce the price, but just assuming we're gonna need them both, so I would approve them, if they don't need them, then we won't get charged them.
I will make a motion to approve the heating and air for action plumbing. And then for Lukin's to do the mini split.
Can we do that all in one motion, or do we need to split?
I would do it separately because there's separate contracts.
Do the action one for.
Right, make a motion to approve the heating and air conditioning for action plumbing. The eleven thousand four eighty five with the denims.
I'll second that.
Okay. There has been a motion made, second for action air, to do the heating and air, for those in favor, but say aye, please?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass, okay, now we go on to the Lukin's part of it, which, uh, I may as well go on the mini split for sixty nine ninety five, and that. I'll make that motion on it.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion, if not, those in favor of the Lukin, uh, uh, bid for sixty nine ninety five, say aye, please?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that passes, very good. Okay, now we are down to the last there on, uh, school bus driver appreciation day.
There's, uh, there's, there's the fire department quotes, uh, the fire, the chassis quote item, but you can, you can absolutely see it. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're not gonna do it.
Yeah, I don't, I was gonna just have him talk real quick about the, what, uh, Scott phones for us.
Yeah, oh, okay, that way.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Okay.
I don't mean to step on your parliamentary procedure.
I'd see where you're getting it.
Yeah.
He tells me, then.
Yeah, we're just not gonna.
Interpreted a little bit.
I always listen to Mark first as well, it's not, it's not a problem. Yeah, yeah, so the reason that, uh, this item was pulled is because the total cost of the truck would be two hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's over the competitive bid threshold. So, the next step will just be to, you know, put this out, same kind of specs out for bid, um, and get responses that then you can approve, or look through sort of a, or cooperative purchasing. The section, you can't, under the law, split up a contract, um, and then therefore avoid competitive bidding, not that it was done on purpose, but, for example, you can't, when you're building a building, bid out the. You know, the, the timber for framing, and then separately bid out the, the siding, you kind of have to do it as once, because your intention is to have a building, your intention is to have a fire truck. And so you have to kind of consider it all as, as one, so therefore it's over the. the bidding threshold. So that was the reason why we pulled, yeah.
They just explained what happened.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The, uh, we, we were reaching out for to get it, we were working on this for a while now. One of the vendors reached out and said, someone wants to cancel on a truck that was ordered, so there was a truck chassis available sitting in the parking lot. So he reached out and said, hey, you have to look in, it's serious, this truck is still for sale, first time for sure. So that's why we put it in front of you. I believe threw them other quotes together, um, to see, to give a total project cost, it would still be a year old. Um, we would just buy the chassis now if it was possible. The truck would then get it lined and get filled. They said there's like fifty trucks in front of it. So the other trucks, uh, the other companies, they're not accepting anything until December of next year. So this will push us out a couple of years. If we continue to keep working on what we can find.
Does this fall under like the public safety equipment purchase, or it's different? Because it's not a single source purchase that we have to look differently, or?
So the pub, uh, there's an exception to the public bidding rule, uh, for used public safety equipment. Uh, this isn't, wouldn't be a used truck. Um, and then sort of separately, there are the state cooperative purchasing, uh, agreements, there's, there's, you can do it through a joint powers entity. You can sort of sign up for one of the national, uh, associations that does this to do a direct purchase. But because this wasn't done through either the cooperative purchasing, purchasing avenue or competitive bidding, it, those are the two ways that you can buy something that's this expensive, or if it's a, a used public safety equipment, um, as well, there is, and there, there is a we can look into drafting the specifications to, because it could be in the best interest of the city financially to have this project completed over a period of time, so you could, I think, develop specs that were to say, you know, delivery of the truck by in two years. Uh, you can put it out for bid now, and if someone were accepting that, and then they could commit to completing that, everybody has a fair chance to bid on it, other companies could as well, this vendor could, and then the city could, could choose it. And we just have to put those specs together, figure out how to do that in a way that doesn't eliminate all competition, because that would be illegal. Uh, and then sort of move forward from there, so there could be some creative options that we can look at, but.
I reached out, Heinem Fire System, they're a smaller owner of make manufacturing vehicles, they're not part of the joint powers agreement stuff.
Yeah.
The other manufacturers like those smaller business, they're all members of that, and that was brought up when we were reporting trucks.
Yeah. And is, you say Heinem?
Heinem.
Heinem, they, uh, they can respond to a, a, like, okay, perfect, perfect, perfect. Got it. And that was all that I had on that topic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, my personal opinion on it is I think we should table that one completely off, I don't see the use for a tanker with the minimum amount of fires that we have in the city, city, when we have fire hydrants and also for the countdown chips. There aren't that many, and that truck doesn't get run that much. I really don't think it's worthwhile to even spend two hundred and fifty, but everybody was quoted two sixty-five. And we need streets, we need police department, we need parks that we're working with, various other things, I think we can make it go, and not only that, but we need to talk to the township, first of all, that are involved, to see if they're even interested in, uh, starting to help pay for this thing. Even though it is two or three years down the road, I'm in favor of looking for something good and used, but I do know that it comes hard. But, uh, I just don't think it's worthwhile, I'll be honest about it, that's only my personal opinion, so. Okay, anything else to mention on that? About, uh, the school bus driver appreciation, are we gonna do something, oh, there he is, in the back, I'm sorry, didn't see you come in.
Ron introduced himself, I don't know.
Chief, would you like to read this to him? I think Ron Furzman does a good thing.
We know that we're next, we're next in line, if you don't say it, so happy to have you do it.
There you go. I've done it before, but I think it's only right that, uh, go on over by and bring him on up here, come on up.
Thank you for being here. I'll go ahead and introduce myself before I. Ron Prager. I'm just self-Wamango, I've been writing for Johnson since the fall of eighteen. I enjoy it. Do you have a little hobby of the life, Chris? Canada, yeah. I am the official Santa for City Wamango and Purple Marley Davis. Hopefully Bob Bowles and Hanks in there for a little while together.
Jeff, that's the reason why I knew you know who he was. It would work out.
All right, so, uh, gonna ask to read this. Where, hey, Darkinson? All right, we're at the American's in daylight, under Rosa Mountain, on that lane highway. From the warm spring to the frigid winter, Minnesota school bus drivers, they can travel more than six hundred and eighty-two thousand chairs who's doing a front school activity. And whereas Minnesota school bus drivers play a critical role in our school system and our folk figures and family stuff. Often looking to treat their school and serving as positive influence on their educational experience. And whereas, near to every school district in the state faces a bus driver shortage, and they're seeking dedicated professionals to serve and do filling flexible jobs. And whereas, the school bus driving industry is the largest home mass in transit Minnesota, or charged reduces environmental impact by using alternative fuels, which are fifty percent. And whereas, students are nearly eight times safer riding to and from school in school buses than in cars. Thanks to rigorous safety standards, including drivers, as well as student training efforts. And where the city of Kenyon appreciates school bus drivers who are represented for valuable contribution to make public education and students safe. Today, we recognize the ability to protect. Now therefore, the city of Kenyon does hereby complain Wednesday, February twenty-first, two thousand forty-four, as school bus driver appreciate. Thank you. Not there is. Yes, where else can we get most little kids all the time? I love it.
Thank you, Ron, so much.
Thank you, thank you, Chip.
Don't tell me to tail it out.
Okay. I think we've got everything else completed now up to this here, for other businesses, schedule of upcoming meetings will be K M U meeting will be Tuesday. February the twentieth at four P M. Next city council meeting will be Tuesday, March the twelfth at seven P M. And then we have our trail committee, which will be Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four at five P M, that, is that it gonna be here at city hall or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And we still are looking for people to, uh, participate in that. So. Okay, we may as well go then with, uh, council and, uh, staff general comments for whatever they wish to say. Mark, how about you, you want to try it?
Um, well, Mayor, I guess I really don't have anything.
Okay. How about you, Derek?
Nothing for me, Mayor, thank you.
No, sir, nothing for me.
Okay. Well, since they say that you can have comments, I'm gonna go with our flag, I wonder, the only thing I recommend from the state is the star. The rest of it I don't quite understand, but, uh, like a painting that you look, look on the wall, you have to have the artist there to figure out what it's all about. Another thing that's been on my mind here for some time, and that is, I also belong to a website for mayors in the state of Minnesota. And what has come up is the cannabis dealings, and they're looking at, some of the cities have already consented to actually running the pot show period, we'll say it, out of the business. Uh, some of them have said yes, some of them have said no, and some of them have said maybe, but you know, that might be something that we could look at. I think we would have a little bit more control, and also, I hate to say it this way too, but, uh, we can use the money ourselves. And so it's just something to think about, we still got another year to go on it, but, uh, that's just my comments on it. Kim, how about you?
Um, just, uh, Park and Rec, we're hosting a paint and sip party at B F W Friday, March eighth. And there's online that you can sign up for that, it's thirty-seven dollars, you'll be able to paint, uh, a lucky le- or a lucky gnome for St. Patty's Day, so anybody can join us for that.
Yeah, how about you, Lee?
Um, I want to start by thanking Officer Womeyer. He came to my house the other night, and went above and beyond to give me a message about some pretty sad news that somebody had been trying to get ahold of me about, and I wanted to thank Chief for that, and it was nice to have Officer Womeyer stop over and give me that message personally, was sad news to get, but I was glad that we had people in town to do that, but it was nice. Um, I want to thank K M U, uh, Mr. Edgar called me, asked about some electrical issues in our area, I thought that was again very nice that we have local people that are calling and saying, are you having this issue, so that was nice. Um, I want to thank Mr. Bartel from the muni, I'm on the committee for that, he really has been doing some good and diligent work to get some pricing and kind of keep things going. Uh, I always want to thank Mr. Edgar, Mr. Eric, because he does a wonderful job of trying to do what we can with what we have, and he's always been real positive, every time I've called him and asked a question about something, he's always wonderful, so. Uh, we have amazing city staff, and I'm very thankful for all of you, so. And I guess, well, I got their comments, thank you all very much.
Okay. And call for a German.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it, all in favor of the motion for a German, say aye please?
Aye.
Aye.